Welcome to the December 22, 2022, public hearing pursuant to school code section 7-780. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. The public hearing pursuant to school code section 7-780 shall come to order. Roll call board secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Present.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Present.
Mr. Neal. Mr. Ward Savage. Ms. Murphy-Morrissey.
Present.
Ms. Williams. Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. At this time, I want to ask, now ask Mr. Berman to preside over the remainder of the public hearing. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. The purpose of this hearing is to consider the official closure of the existing Sankow Elementary School located at 15 East Lamont Avenue, Glen Olden Borough, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. At least one possible plan under consideration by the board calls for the closure of the school and reassignment of the students currently attending there. For that reason, we have convened this hearing under section 780 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code of 1949 as amended. There, the school code provides that a public hearing is required whenever a board is considering a closure of a public school. That hearing shall not be less than three months prior to the final decision of the board calling for such a closing. Because that, because of that statutory requirement, the Board of School Directors will not be making a formal decision this evening whether the existing elementary school will or will not be closed. Instead, for the next three months, you and any other member of the public will have an opportunity to comment and raise questions regarding this issue before the board will be permitted to take a final vote. Before we proceed any further, there are a few items to have added to the record. First, I have marked as Exhibit A, a board resolution in the form of a certification from the board secretary. This, this resolution authorized and directed various steps, including, including this hearing relating to the closure of Sankow Elementary School. The resolution was adopted by the board at its regular advertised meeting on December 6, 2022, and includes the board secretary's certification related to that resolution and the resolution's exhibit. Second, second, I have marked as Exhibit B, the proof of publication of the advertisement for tonight's hearing. According to this document, the advertisement appeared in the Delaware County Daily Times, a newspaper of general circulation within the district, on December 7, 2022, which is 15 days prior to tonight's hearing. Third, and finally, I note that on December 21, 2022, I sent notices on the district's behalf to the various relevant planning commissions of the board's potential action. A copy of that certified letter with attachments will be entered as Exhibit C. I will also supplement Exhibit C with any delivery notifications and responses when Next is a short presentation by Dr. McGary and his administrative team, which will address any bases for the administration's statement to close the school.
Thank you, Solicitor Berman, Board President Brown, members of the board, members of the public. Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight on what would mark an important goal for the school district. The Upper Darby School District is attempting to ease overcrowding in district schools for over 25 years. That's just one example. In order to address overcrowding at Bywood Elementary School, the district found what was expected to be a short-term solution by entering into a lease with the St. George School in Glen Olden in 2005, currently known as the Walter M. Sanko Elementary School. As we all know, the district continues to face overcrowding in our elementary schools and middle schools. Over the past six years, the district has reviewed several possible solutions, both short-term and long-term, to ease overcrowding throughout the district in a financially realistic, sustainable manner. Tonight, we are focused on the sunsetting of Walter M. Sanko Elementary School. The Board of School Directors established several facilities objectives, and one of those key objectives is to focus and has been focusing on making sure that Walter M. Sanko's students attend a school within the boundaries of the Upper Darby School District. That objective was set several years ago, and we've been working tirelessly to get there. Of course, the district has set other objectives regarding the need to improve facilities over the years, but a singular focus on bringing Walter M. Sanko Elementary School students back within district boundaries has brought us to this moment this evening. With this, with the purpose of this hearing tonight, with the purpose of this hearing tonight is meant not to review all of our past presentations. I do feel it's important that we provide some clarity and information that has previously been publicly reviewed with all district home and school associations during several public meetings where any and all members of the public could have provided comments or asked questions, as well as meetings with district staff. The district has publicly discussed several options prior to the hearing this evening. One, we discussed maintaining the original plan of moving the K Center to Aronomic and Sanko to the kindergarten center temporarily until a new elementary school could be built somewhere in the 69th Street area. On September 27, 2022, during the finance and operations publicly held meeting, the district provided an update on the planning of and for a new elementary school. We reviewed building a new elementary school on the district-owned Cardington Field, the district-owned 69, on the township-owned 69th Street Athletic Fields, the district partially-leased and township-owned Marshall Road Fields, as well as reviewing the opportunity to turn the kindergarten center into its own elementary school. We reviewed potential timelines, as well as the pros and cons of each location. In reality, every location presents or presented with a set of zoning barriers that may not even allow for a new elementary school on any of those locations. The most optimal location is not owned by the district, is potentially very costly, and will take several years of approvals to begin, to begin, begin construction if it were to become a new school. On November 22, 2022, during the finance and operation publicly held meeting, the district provided an update on Sanko Elementary School merging with Aronomic Elementary School. During this presentation, the district administration reviewed temporarily shifting boundaries and moving Hillcrest and Sanko to Aronomic, along with Highland Park students to Hillcrest, in order to ease overcrowding not only at Highland Park and Sanko, but potentially at the kindergarten center. That was reviewed to find space. The district administration recommended merging K-5 Sanko students with K-5 Aronomic students. As we have previously reviewed, the district has seen an increase in our English learners' enrollment, and the needs of the kindergarten students requires additional space. The merger of Sanko K-5 students with Aronomic K-5 students makes better use of space at both Aronomic and the kindergarten center. We have engaged with a company known as Site Logic, who has been reviewing all of our facilities, enrollment both current and future, and potential locations for a new elementary school, for an updated facility study that will be publicly reviewed in February of 2023. And finally, the recommended sunsetting of Walter M. Sanko will reduce the time students are on a bus by almost two miles, allows the district to begin to pay down the bond issuance on the Aronomic renovation and expansion using those leased dollars, and provides the district with an opportunity to allocate personnel to academic and social and emotional needs of students. This move will also provide these students, the Sanko students, with access to new classroom spaces and updated facilities. I recognize that our plans have changed, but no one here predicted a worldwide pandemic, an unfortunate humanitarian crisis at our nation's borders, and the worldwide events that have added to our space and personnel needs. Tonight, our focus is on bringing Walter M. Sanko students closer to home, within schools, within the Upper Darby School District boundaries. With that said, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Manfree, our Director of Elementary Education.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and thank you, Upper Darby School Board and community members for being here this evening. As Dr. McGary previously stated, the purpose of this hearing is to provide the Upper Darby School Board and the public information regarding the proposed sunsetting of Walter M. Sanko Elementary School. Let me begin with the reasons why we are making this proposal. As you know, Walter Sanko is located in Glen Olden at the former St. George Archdiocesan School. This is outside of the Upper Darby School District's geographical boundaries. As stated previously, Sanko became a school in 2005 to relieve overcrowding in Bywood Elementary School. This has always been recognized as a short-term solution to a long-term problem of overcrowding. Yet, here we are, almost 20 years later. From the beginning of our facilities studies, plural, it was a primary goal to find a way to bring our Sanko students back within the boundaries of Upper Darby School District. This is for several reasons. First, our Sanko students travel up to 30 minutes from 69, the 69th Street area and the area of Drexel Hill, known as Drexel Plaza, and 30 minutes back home. Our Transportation Department estimates, estimates a 15-minute difference in travel time by bringing our students back within the boundaries of Upper Darby School District. Additionally, the cost of leasing Sanko will be used, as Dr. McGary alluded to, to pay down the bond issuance for the expansion and renovation of Aronomic Elementary School. So where will Sanko students be going to school next year? As Dr. McGary mentioned, the proposed plan is to have our Sanko students become part of the Aronomic catchment area and attend Aronomic beginning in August of 2023. As displayed on this map, Dr. McGary is pointing at the current Sanko catchment area. The area that he is pointing to now is the area, the 69th Street area, and the area he's pointing to now is the area known as Drexel Plaza. You can see that Aronomic's catchment area is in yellow, and the proposed change is for the Sanko catchment areas to join the catchment area at Aronomic. As you can imagine, this will require some transition planning. Luckily, I have a fantastic team of people to work with in Mr. Rehak and Dr. Paklisi as we move forward, as well as their assistant principals, as we move forward in making this plan. Here you can see some of our transition planning that we're proposing in order to accomplish the merger. Virtual student meet-and-greets, pen pals, joint Home and School Association meetings, virtual tours, in-person tours, and joint social events that will include our families, our staffs, and our parents. Dr. McGary, you want to speak about the timeline?
As our Solicitor Kyle Berman mentioned, tonight, we're here on December 22 for the public hearing. As you can see here listed on the slides, there is a link to an email address. We will be taking comments at that email address following this evening's meeting up until the end of March. As Solicitor Berman mentioned, following this evening's meeting, the board will wait three full months, listen to public comment, and then potentially board action taking place at the regularly scheduled April legislative meeting, April 11, 2023. Depending on the board's decision in April, we would then begin to continue to hold our staffing meetings. We would also begin holding our transition planning meetings, external meetings, following the April 11 decision by the board, if the board does move in this direction. We have already begun some internal planning. It would be unwise for us not to consider what transitions may need to take place. If the board does decide this, it would not make sense for us to plan only in April. So we are planning, as an administration, the best practice is to make sure that the merger that would take place in August of 23 is a smooth one. I also want to make it a note, the reason why the school district is referring to, the administration is referring to it as sunsetting, is we do not want to add any fear or concern to families right now. This is not an immediate decision. The school will remain open until June of 23, and we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, careful with our choice of words. If the board does decide to take action at the April 11 meeting, it would mean that the school would close in June of 23, and that the Sanko students would begin to merge with Aronomic in August of 23. That's our presentation for this evening.
Thank you. So before we move on, do any board members wish to ask any questions or clarify any points with the superintendent?
So, Dr. McGary, I just want you to clarify again for the public that no decision, we're not voting on anything tonight, and this is more informational, and giving the public a chance to weigh in for the first time on this issue, and they will have other opportunities to weigh in. Am I correct?
Yes, as Solicitor Berman said, there's specific school code requirements. Tonight, we're holding, on December 6, the board voted to hold this hearing. Tonight, we're holding the hearing. There'll be comments this evening. It'll become part of the record. The email address will be open, and I'll provide comments from following this evening until the end of March. At that time, the board will be provided all of those comments and make a decision at the April 11 meeting. No decision is made tonight. The only opportunity would be at the April 11 meeting.
Thank you, Dr. McGary.
I just wonder if you could sort of clarify that the purpose tonight isn't to have a sort of back-and-forth informational, but, but that perhaps if there are some questions that seem to be sort of common themes, we'll find a way of maybe getting people information. If you could just clarify, though, that we're not really here to answer questions at this time?
And that is part of what I will be indicating to people, but thank you. It's always good to be reminded. So the record will reflect there are no comments from the board either. So the next item on the agenda is public comment, and we'll be starting with the first person signed up to speak, where each person wishing to speak may do so for up to three minutes, and then must give up the floor to the next person who has signed up. If you have a comment, you are required to stand up, come to the microphone, speak slowly, and state your name. Please also spell your name. Remember that the court sten, the court stenographer over here is trying to create a record of this hearing, but if you speak too quickly, too softly, or otherwise unclearly, your comments might not reflect what you intended to say. Finally, keep in mind that the purpose of this portion of the hearing is for the board to hear your comments and concerns. State it another way, it is not an opportunity to discuss or debate, or debate issues, merely to get feedback from you, the public, who will be impacted by any decisions made. Neither the board members nor those administrators present will be able to respond to any questions posed to them at this time, although the administration may choose to respond later outside of this hearing structure, and I'm sure will find a way to do so. With that, the first person to sign up is Megan Rubino.
Hello. My name's Megan Rubino, M.E.A.G.A.N.R.U.B.I.N.O.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm speaking as the president of the Aronomic Home and School Association this evening, and I want to say that I've enjoyed coming to all of the meetings so far, discussing all of these presentations, and and I want to say that our Home and School Association urges the board and the administration in their planning, and in the private planning and in the public planning, to make sure that the well-being of all students before, during, and after the transition to the new Aronomic building is taken into consideration, that all of the planning is given the proper time, so that everybody who is being affected at all points is given the proper time to provide feedback, and that there's transparency around maintaining staffing levels, since there will be the merging of two schools, that there be transparency about the personnel that is staying and the personnel that is not able to stay, that there be transparency about the academic and extracurricular programs that both schools currently have, and whether those will be maintained, merged, or eliminated in this process, and that there be transparency about the future of Aronomic Elementary School's Title I funding status, because it currently doesn't have Title I funding status, and Sankow does. Also, that the publicly available timelines provide contingency plans for anticipated and unanticipated delays in the completion of the construction at Aronomic, and that there be very clear plans before the board votes on what would happen if the construction was not completed by August of 2023, so that proper planning could be done before that happens, so that all of the children and the families and the personnel working in the buildings is able to be aware and to make their contingency plans as well. Also, that any questions that are provided at the W.M. Sankow hearing at UpperDarbySD.org email address, if there are questions, that if there are questions that come up very frequently, if those could be provided in an FAQ document, that would be positive as well, so that there's full transparency to all the people, that they know that the same questions are on everybody else's minds. And as long as those things are considered, I think that this is going to be a step in the right direction for all of the children and the families in the school district. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Midward Ganges, G.A.N.G.E.S., 1905 Green Hill Road, Lansdowne, PA, 19050. So I am with the Sankow Home and School Association, which is my interest in the matter, and of course, the kids that are being bused out and now coming back in are kids that are going to be coming up to at our middle school, the Beverly Hills Middle School, which I'm also HSA with. So first, to the board, thank you, Dr. McGary, Dr. Manfree, thank you for your continued efforts, hard work to reconcile the overcrowding with the limited facilities and the work that you've been doing there. I want to state that we know you're doing your best. We trust, we have trusted for decades that you're going to do the best by the kids. We continue to trust that you're going to do the best by the kids, and we know that this transition is hard work. That said, for the parents that I've had an opportunity to speak with, this is still kind of blindsiding them. I'm still hearing, didn't know, oh, we thought it wasn't, oh, now it is. So to that point, like to ask that more information that you, in your plan, if it's not already in your plan, you provide more information on an ongoing basis through this January-through-March time period to keep the community informed and to invite the community to be engaged. If we just leave it at this tonight, it'll slip off people's radar, and then it'll be August or June, where it'll be vote time in April or integration time, and everybody's blindsided. All right, so big elephant in the room. Our parents are concerned that even though you have plans for emotional support in place, we're really concerned that the kids are going to get there, and it's going to be a huge racial or class tension war. We'd like to know that you have an actual plan to address that specific thing, to address discrimination, bullying, aggressions or microaggressions from not only students, but also teachers. Not going to sit up here and pretend that there isn't still some systemic racism going on, and our parents are concerned about it. So I just like it on the, on the record that we're asking you to address it specifically, and one thing that might be overlooked, even though you'll provide the emotional support if it happens to a kid, is disciplinary actions to the people, either adult or children, who are perpetrating these things. This is what is, the parents I've talked about are most concerned with. No matter how hard the good people work for the integration, there are some bad actors out there, and we're concerned with that. So preemptive information towards that, how to take advantage of the, of the emotional support that you're going to be providing, and that's all we can ask.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mohammed Hassan, M.O.H.A.M.A.D. So I have a first-
Your last name.
Hassan, H.A.S.A.N.
Go ahead.
My first question is, Sanko joined at the Aronomic Elementary School, so is it going to be permanent or temporarily? If it's temporarily or permanent, how long? And I need update for school for like nearby 69 states, and how long it will be take to process, and what you take the step. So that'd be all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica Nataro, N.A.T.A.R.O., and I live at 152 Overhill Road in Upper Darby, PA 19082. Walter M. Sanko's Home and School President and proud parent of a Sanko Elementary School student. With all due respect to the board, thank you, everybody, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a little nervous. I'm standing here neutral to the decision to merge Sanko with Aronomic. However, I stand here to represent my community, which is diversely populated, majority being minorities who speak little English, and as a mother to a multiracial child who hasn't been exposed to classism or racism in his life, and I fear that will soon end. When the idea was brought up in my community a few years ago regarding Sanko Elementary, Sanko Elementary and Aronomic Elementary merge, at first I was really excited. At the thought of our students returning to the district, being an optimist, I immediately started envisioning all of the positive effects this would have on the Sanko community and myself. The opportunity to meet new friends, the commute would be much easier for me and my other parents. Some of us wouldn't be worried about driving so long in the snow anymore, and most of all, our students will be able to have access to a close commute for extracurricular activities such as orchestra and sports. That excitement has slowly come to an end and has now manifested into fear and worry amongst our community. I've had many conversations with people regarding the merge from both sides of the tracks, but most of the conversations I'm concerned that I have with Aronomic members, they're not, majority, maybe 95%, aren't welcoming conversations. Many people in the community, in the Aronomic community have made it clear in person and on social media that they do not want our kids there, our kids, whatever that means. It's very disheartening and hurtful to read or hear these, these comments, those of which I witnessed, and I'm not afraid to say it. I'm sorry, but I'm worried for our children, our minority children, our melanated children, our children who have language barriers, learning barriers, emotional barriers. We have to create better for them and all of our children, and I trust that the district and the board will do that. If those comments are a reflection of how our students will be treated in our new school space, then I propose that the board or district creates a swift zero-tolerance policy for unwelcoming or aggressive behavior towards our students that every family and staff member has to sign. As a mother of a multiracial child and not, and I'm a working-class citizen, I'm concerned because of the conversations are unwelcoming, I fear of how the actual environment will feel, and I'm closing this with all due respect to everybody on the board. I'm sorry if anybody's offended by what I say, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Aisha Ganges at 1905 Green Hill Road, Lansdowne, Pennsylvania, 19050.
Spell your last name.
Oh, G.A.N.G.E.S.
Very good. All right, go ahead.
Yes, so I'm here because I'm a parent of former students who have been at Sanko, and we have loved Sanko. I mean, we've loved it, loved it, loved it. Ms. Simpson, she was our principal there for majority of the years that we were there. We just love the environment she created. It was very, very special, and I don't want that to be missed, and I think it's very important to have for the, the home and school representatives of each Aronomic school and Sanko school to really come together to understand really each other's differences and what their needs are for their population at each of the schools, and just come together before, before the opening, I mean, before the merge occurs in August, if the board indeed does vote that way. And I'm encouraging and urging parents to participate in these home and school associations so that you can have your needs heard and your ideas heard, because that's, that's very important, and we don't know what your ideas are and what your needs are unless you let us know. So again, urging parents to join in their home and schools even right now, and to participate, and then for the home and schools to come together in the future. And thank you. Thank you for speaking. Thank you for speaking as well. Thank you.
My first name, H.A.R.S.H.A.R.A.N., last name, K.A.U.R. I am from 148 Overhill Road, Upper Darby, 19082. So I am here, good evening, everyone. So I am here sent by my daughter, her just from third grade. She said, mommy, you have to go and put my voice out there for me. And she actually had a bad experience, which is reality of her life. Kindergarten, we moved to Upper Darby from Ben Salem a few years ago, and I had to look for a full-time kindergarten center for her because she wasn't going to pre-K. And she went to Holy Cross, and that was her worst experience for the whole year. I had to send mails, I had to talk to teacher, and I wasn't heard even one day. She was put on the side of the, on the class because she wasn't really doing good on her reading and writing, obviously was her kindergarten center. On the first day, I was sent a huge note that I still have, that your daughter does not know how to sit, read, and write, and behave in the class. So that year, I did pay around $8,000 in advance for her because that was a private school, you know? And obviously, as a parent, we do want, we do want best, whatever we can have for them. But it is reality of life, we cannot buy everything with money. As the kids are growing, the more important for them is to know that they are important, they are loved without the matter what class, what country, what race, and wherever, whichever part of the world they come from. So even being an immigrant, I was here in the United States around 2006. I did go to, I'm around this area for many years now. I did go to Delaware County Community College. Then I did my bachelor from Strayers in criminal justice. And then we are, I don't want to tell my kids that we are different. They are born here, and they have all the rights to be loved without being dark or fair. So it is 98% our kids learn from our homes. Their parents are their first teacher. We are definitely, everyone agree here. So it's not, I don't think it is something to talk to kids or talk to teacher. It's about being two different communities. I have read very bad comments on the Facebook that they don't want our kids there. I have seen people saying they have to go to meeting and try to stop this merge. This cannot be happening. So we are hard-working people, all of us are, okay? It's, no one is here sitting and their next three generations or fourth generations are not going to work. This is America, and we get paid by hours, and even if we have businesses, we work 24 hours. Having businesses means keeping an eye on all the employees and your business, you know? It's work for 24 hours. So only concern, I have two concerns, if my kids will be loved. Does the people around that area or the parents from, I know they pay big taxes, you know? And I know they have made their work, way there to-
You're beyond your three minutes, so if you can wrap this up quickly.
Okay. So only thing, I know, this is a big change, and it's a beautiful school. I have seen it, I saw some construction work there too. So only thing is, if the staff, if the staff from the, if the staff from the Senko would be going along the kids, would be helpful. And second, only thing is, if they're accepting and welcoming our kids from the bottom of their heart, not just as being a part, some part of the Upper Darby that they don't want it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is M.D. Islam, M.D.I.S.L.A.M.
Last name, Islam.
I.S.L.A.M., Islam. Thank you, everyone. We are from 69. My kids go to Senko School. Two years back, I wanted to move from this place to another place. My son said, Papa, please do not move out of this school. So at my childhood, we have seen, I'm from Bangladesh, we have seen, if any new child come to a new school, they need to adapt there, and it is a lot of hassle, sometimes good and sometimes bad. And here, the existing student who are already studying there, they have a mindset up, they have a different relationship with teachers, existing staffs, and also the community from they are going. So this is a very good setup and very good understanding, but if they need to move out of that school, they'll be like a kind of orphan.
Sir, do you prefer to make your comments in your home language? Because we have an interpreter.
So. Okay. So adapting to a new environment is very challenging to students, existing students. So if it is must necessary, then we have nothing to do, and if we have something to say, I say not to merge with Aronamik. If it is possible, you have an initiative to establish at 69th Street, what is going on, I do not know, but you need to build that sort of institution in other places. And Aronamik, that is a different area, and also it has existing students, staffs. They are economically totally different scenario. Those who live in 69th Street, they are more struggling people, and they cannot, or sometimes they are hard to take care of themselves, and also their students. But in Aronamik, their situation, economic situation is much more above than 69th Street. So I feel there will be some conflict between staffs and students, and students and students, so many things like racial issue or bullying. So I'm not in favor of merging with Aronamik. And if it is possible, keep the existing position at older Senko School, or otherwise make separate facility for those students. If it is must to bring the school back to Upper Darby School District, so I suggest to build a separate institution.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of the public comments for this evening. We have therefore fulfilled the requirements and obligations of the school code. I have pointed out before that no action on this issue can be taken earlier than three months from now, which equates to a date in March of 2023. However, as you heard from Dr. McGary, the administration does not recommend that the board act on this proposal until the board's regularly scheduled meeting in April of Any action must take place at a publicly advertised meeting of the board, so if it will not be at a regularly scheduled meeting, then it will have to be separately advertised, and you would therefore know that it's going to happen. This waiting period is designed to give ample opportunity for the public to give feedback to the board prior to final action. To that end, the board will accept written submissions from the public at that email address there, and will do so through the date of the board's final action on this matter. Also, and perhaps obviously, you can also comment during the appropriate times at public meetings held between now and then. With that, we have reached the end of this meeting. Mr. President, at this time, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Thank you, Mr. Berman, for facilitating the meeting. Thank you. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good night and have a great holiday, everyone.